Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November 12th. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. If everyone could stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. The first item on the agenda is Regency at Glen Ellen Bond Reduction Request Discussion with Ted Merchant.
I had sent in a letter to you requesting reduction of the various bonds.
Excuse me. Could you just introduce yourself for the public?
Sorry. Ted Merchant, I'm Land Development Director with Toll Brothers. Had submitted a letter to the board requesting reduction of four separate bonds that are held on-site. I had worked with your review consultant, Beta, to come up with the numbers that are in that letter. I think that they were in agreement of the amounts. We went through in detail what items were remaining, went through bond estimate, and finally came up with this. So I know we're coming down towards the end, but we still have close to $600,000 in bond money for what is remaining out there. So not a whole lot to discuss unless you guys have questions.
No, just for the folks at home, there was an issue that was brought up, it had been ongoing for a while, on the emergency access road, and Toll Brothers had agreed to pull everything back down to the original GeoGrid and clean that up. And then in the springtime, they're gonna... Actually, you saw it in... You see... You're sorry. You loaned and seeded that, correct?
No loan.
No loan.
But seed, which is the spec for the product. So yes, we brought it back to the original specification. We loaned and seeded it, and there is an item still in full for the...
Springtime.
Remaining work on that.
Yeah. And then the only other thing was, which wasn't that, but there was an issue with the well, which was with conservation. You had a couple of well issues. Do you want to walk through that quick?
It's with the Board of Health and not conservation.
Yeah, okay.
And this was brought to my attention two weeks ago, maybe, that the Board of Health has an issue with the irrigation-holding pond, and that it's against their bylaw to have that, which was a surprise to all of us, being as we went through a fairly extensive approval process, not only with your board and theirs, but others as well, where I thought that was pretty clearly defined. But we are...
So I don't need to get into any reasons, but I just know people will ask. That's why I'm asking. So you guys are working on resolving that issue?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right. Was there anything else from the board?
Mr. Chair, if you could briefly explain... Can we get into a little of the reduction of why we're going through with this reduction with through town council, how he explained it to us?
Oh, you mean on the... Why... Okay. So, well, we had gone... Initially, what we had gone is that typically in most of the bonds, the reduction for the bonds would be at the discretion of the planning board on most bonds, the way they were written. On this one, the way that it was written, even if it rejected it, Toll would have 30 days to address the issue, and then they could immediately get the... They could get the money anyhow, because we did check on that, because we were initially, before some of these things started shaking free, we were concerned about making sure that we had enough to cover everything. So basically, we're working within the letter of the bond agreement and the agreement that was made between the town and Toll. So that was that. All right. Did... Was there... Was there a... Do I have to go through each one separately, Camille, or...
You can just make sure this is...
Yeah. Oh, okay. Thank you.
But just one quick thing.
Yeah.
Melissa's email, is there anything to be addressed?
I don't know. Let me just check that whole one, sorry.
That's the last item.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Sorry. So there was one last thing from our consultant, because we had a different consultant than this one, which carried through. So they had two items which are minor. One was the signs for the emergency access signs. That was in there. And then the as-built was another question. We wanted to make sure that the as-bills, which was in that letter, which you're aware of, would be provided prior to the next bond request, just so we have them, we don't have to chase after those for there. And I think that was... I think that was it. Yeah, so that was it. So I make a motion to...
Do you want to say that's any comments?
Oh, okay. That's a good question. Sorry, I was up at 4:30. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, come on up. Yeah, you just please, if you could identify yourself and...
Sure.
Yeah, you could go to the podium too, this one over there, if you want.
What's that?
You could go to the podium, or you could sit there, whichever one you like.
Yeah, I'll sit here.
Okay.
I have a meeting today.
Hey, Brian.
Brian Fennell, resident president trustee, Glen Ellen. One question or concern I have with the bond release, though, is I know I'm not going to go over a bunch of items that are... That we have concerns about. The largest one is the water, the water system in there. We've been working with the DPW, the Board of Health, regarding the high temperature. I know there's no technical spec on that, but the chlorine level at the far end is below what the Board of Health recommends for a level on there.
Okay, so...
My concern is...
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I guess my concern is about releasing bond money before that's fixed. Right now, there's no fix on this. The mandate that we've been given is the spec that we've been given by the Board of Health and the DPW is .2 to .6, and our findings are .01. I'm surprised that you're issuing occupancy permits to those houses that are getting that, let alone the bond release, so...
Okay, so there's a couple of things there. So number one, the town has delivered the water to the beginning of the site, which is the town's responsibility, at the correct temperature and the correct amount of chlorine. Once it gets inside the development, that's the responsibility of Toll Brothers to deal with that issue. And like you said, that's a tricky situation there, because there's no clear, defined, you know, what constitutes, you know, potable water in that area. So... And then I could actually defer back to Jim on some of this stuff, because he's really the person that would... Has been working on this more. And the other thing was, the town council said that this unfortunately is not a town issue. So once they get into the development, that's between you and the developer, because I did ask that question. I said, "What can we do to work to, you know, for your behalf?" And he said, "Unfortunately, it's nothing that we really can address legally."
But isn't that part of the... Considered part of the infrastructure of the development, which you guys are considering for bond release, though?
The stuff is the... Meaning the pipes and all the things to put in correctly. The tricky part is, it's the temperature of the water. That's the thing that's kind of not on anyone's radar screen. So there's no... Right now, there's no clear definition that says, you know, in the development, the water should come out of the tap at a specific temperature range.
What about the chlorine level? Isn't that a requirement at the far end?
That one I'd have to defer to Jim on, because I'm not sure on the chlorine levels that that's something I'm not too familiar with.
So at the beginning, that's why I asked the chair to explain, you know, town councils ruling on all of this. And we were looking at that exactly of holding money back for this specific issue. And here's what Rich just said, what the chair just said, is exactly what we were told, that there was nothing in what the bond reduction for what they're looking for in any of these bond reductions, that we could legally hold our tight towards the water issue. It's for curving, it's for paving, it's for a whole bunch of other stuff, other than which is not spelled out on water or infrastructure of the pipes. So he said that we could not hold this back, and we said, "Well, what if..." And that's when he got into the 30-day thing, and he told us that there was nothing legally that we could stand on to hold back or turn down this request from Toll Brothers for a reduction.
Right. And the, you know, with the conversation had been ongoing with you guys, so we had hoped that, you know, by this point in time, it had been worked out, which Ted, could you speak to? Is there any... Has there been any resolution on your end on exactly how this is gonna work out?
I wish I knew the answer to that. I think there've been some new developments over the past couple of days for me that, you know, we're looking into. I think that we've all been working to try to find a resolution, but I don't know that I have the smoking gun or the silver bullet, I guess is the right saying there. So we'll continue to look at it.
So you can understand, I mean, so from the residents' point of view and from, you know, from the town point of view, you know, when we looked at it, we're like, "Well, we want to make sure that we can do... We do everything we can to make sure that when they, you know, that when they get there, it's working as one would expect it to work." The temperature, whole temperature thing in there is just... That's something completely new and different that, you know, we haven't had before, just, you know, had experience with. And unfortunately, there was nothing specifically in our documentation that said, you know, like you said, you know, the water has to come out of the faucet at 60 degrees. So we're kind of in an area where we don't have a lot of leeway there.
And, yeah, I mean, I'd say I'm a little bit in the same boat, right? We're all in a little bit of uncharted territory here, and I think everyone here would agree that we're all sort of working towards the same goal.
Okay, so is there... So to get some clarity, is Toll actively working to try to get some sort of resolution to this?
I think we've been actively working on that for a year and a half to varying degrees.
Okay.
So I think we're continuing.
All right.
And the other thing I'd like to add is, we did submit a letter to Camille to share with the board. A lot of the items that was on the... On that letter, Toll has taken care of, so they are diligently working on getting the community taken care of. So there are others, so thank you on that, Ted.
Yeah. All right. So like I said, hopefully that, you know, now you... At least there's some understanding to why with the bond release, it's going the way it is, so...
Understood.
Yeah, okay. Well, stay in touch. We'll do what we can. Thank you. All right. And now, are there any other comments from the board or the audience? All right, good. All right. I make a motion that we release the amount of $311,000 from Phase... $311,116,000 from Phase 1.
Do each one individually, if you would.
Okay. From the bond, leaving the amount to $51,000.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Phase 2, request for a reduction for the current amount of $429,000 to the amount of $68,700.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Phase 2D, the reduction for the current amount of $266,700 to the amount of $92,900.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Phase 3, request for a reduction from the original amount of $620 to $50 to the amount of $387,760.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you, and we'll look forward for those as-bills, so we can get that, you know, underway.
Will do.
Great, thanks again.
Yep.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a Form A and R Plan Application from Paul D. Simone. All right, Paul, if you could...
Good evening. May I ask this?
Aye.
Paul D. Simone, Colonial Engineering.
You're gonna speak in the mic.
The plan?
You're gonna speak in the mic, sorry, Paul. Yeah.
Well, I just want to give you some colored plans, because they're very confusing.
Okay, well, can you... Right, which is fine. Can you hand us the plans, and just if you don't speak in the mic, the folks at home can't hear? And then the media people yell at us. Okay, sorry, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, because it's registered land, there's a lot of parcels involved. The owners do not want to combine the land under one certificate, so it makes it kind of tough to subdivide it. So what you're looking at is about five parcels, and all that's gonna happen here is it's gonna be combined into one lot. That's it.
Okay, that's pretty easy. So the big blue on the base, that's it?
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Because if you read all the notes, oh, who's getting what parcel, who's deeding what parcel to who, that's what it's gonna end up to. So the attorney already had the deeds certified in land court, and they're just waiting on the plan.
All right, well, and we have an affrontage and area, so...
It's conforming.
Yep.
Conforming.
Okay. All right. Any comment from the board? All right. And what are we gonna call this? What...
It's a Form A application.
No, no, but don't they... Usually, we say it like a lot number. Is it combined to a certain...
It's, again, it's a lot of lots.
Don't have to have a house number.
It's a lot of lots.
All right, I'll just do it by the date of the plan. So I make a motion that we approve the plan from Colonial Engineering for the date of October 21st, 2024, for Acorn Street property.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Oh, thank you.
All set.
And until you guys did that, we can't even get a house number, so that's...
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
It's just difficult, so...
And if you want, you can sign the MIR, so Paul can take that with him.
Okay, sure. Why don't we do that? Because I may tip my sweater off.
I'll just take one of those.
Yep. It's 20 degrees in here.
Yeah.
He's not just making...
Yeah.
Jim, would you mind dating that?
I already did.
Thank you.
I'll learn.
Squeak this one.
You can sign a video copy as well. It goes to stay with me.
It doesn't relax the...
Yeah, that way I can...
No, you guys gotta stay awake.
Okay.
Oh, God, squeak past me bedtime.
Ted, get another pen.
Paul, what's it going?
Think about that one.
They could help the attached services for the playoff.
Rich.
Rich?
Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
You grab my pen for me?
Yeah. Mike, sorry, actually, Mike, I should...
Is anyone missing a pen?
There's one.
All right, so, okay, all right.
All right, so after that brief respite, next item on the agenda would be special permit site plan approval, public hearing continued. If you could read that, Nicole, if it was so timed.
Town Millis Office of the Planning Board noticed a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Milestone of Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Dimitri T. Potties, Dover Road Solar LLC, 400 Edgewater Place, Suite 570, Wakefield, Mass., 01880. Requesting a special permit for site plan approval under Section 21 Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installation and Section 13C of zoning bylaw, Town Millis, for installation of 498-kilowatt AC ground-mounted solar array on property located at 114th Road, Millis Mass., Accessories Map 53, Parcel 6, property owned by B.A.S.F. Corporation. This hearing has been requested to be continued without discussion to Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. Copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, so this has been asked to be continued again, so I make a motion to postpone it to our next meeting, which is...
Not until January 14th.
Oh, sorry. So postpone it to January 14th, which is two meetings from now, so... Motion's been made?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. All right. Next...
Move it to that, if you want, because it's not a public hearing for the minutes.
Okay, well, let's do Acorn Place Senior Residential Community Development. Since it's not a public hearing, we can go ahead. So did we get that... Did Ted give an email from Ted, right?
Yes, this is my one, yeah.
All right, so with the Acorn Place, they have done some work up there, and they're asking for an extension, which we have an email in here, just so I can read it. There you go. Yeah, I'll read yours, because it's... I don't get to dig for it. All right, so the paving contractor is scheduled to be in Millis in this week. Once they're in Millis, they're gonna be paving May Road, which is a different development, and then finishing up Acorn. So it looks like they've done the prep work over at May Road. I looked... I drove by there today, so the base is in. So the anticipation is that the paver will be there, because they wouldn't have wasted the money to get it prepped and then not do it, but we'll see what happens. And then that would be the... One of the last items that they had left to do. They did take care of some sidewalks and other items up there, and if you... If the... Steve, do you want to step up and say anything? Are you in good shape? Oh, they're debating among themselves. You guys good?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good? All right, so anyhow, we... Just the residents have been here advising us of the progress and helping us to encourage the developer to wrap it up, so... So hopefully, they'll pave the road, and we'll be able to close this thing out, and we'll be all done, so... So they asked...
Ted did say he would be here in December, hopefully, with the as-bills.
Oh, and they will be here with... In December with the as-bills, after that's done. So I make a motion to grant them a one-month extension.
To December 10th?
To December 10th.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. So hopefully, fingers crossed, the trucks will be here soon, and this will all be done, so... All right, and eight, so we're still... All right, I'll do the minutes, yep. All right, so I make a motion. You got too many papers here.
Do we do?
The minutes, I just want to get the date from...
They're at the very end.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Planning Board meeting dated October 8th, 2024.
Yeah, it's written.
It's written.
Second. All right, the motion's been made in second. Is all in favor, except Mike, I don't think you were there.
Yeah, I abstain.
Okay. Aye. All right, great, thank you. All right. Anything new and different over in the town, Jim?
No.
Pretty quiet?
We can see the building is going on in Pleasant Street and 109.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Construction.
Those are coming out nice. I think that they're nicely designed and fit well for Millis.
I believe that, what's it, 114 Union Street? I believe that they'll be going back in front of the CBA next week.
So that's the old Roman shoe?
Yep.
Good. And they've got the cellar hole on the 10109, the third one that's going in. So that's gonna be... So they'll be wrapping that up in six months or something like that.
Paving's done, sidewalk's done on Plain Street.
Yep.
The detectable pads will be starting... That can be done during the winter, just milling and just putting down the pads. So they'll be all done sometime during the winter.
We're not gonna have a winter this year.
Let's hope not.
It isn't long.
Let's hope not. We need a little rain, though.
We do, yeah, it's very good.
Millis isn't a... I mean, part of that three drum, of the three.
Oh, really?
I think if you drive around, you can see people that lived here all their life, you can see that's probably worse than they've ever seen.
Yeah, no, it is definitely...
And I'm sure driving up Causeway Street, you can actually see plants growing again.
Yeah. Well, that was all... That was all from the beavers that did it, so... Yeah, way back when, the... I mean, when you... When we drove... When... Causeway Street, when you go through the area that looks like Simba's forest from, you know, The Lion King, that used to be all pine trees in there. That was all a beautiful pine forest, and then the beavers got in and flooded it and killed them all, so that was back in the '70s, so...
Metfield State Hospital, the trails out back have already lost multiple trees just in the past month from the wind. No, I'm just talking because of the drought, I think, because they're just... The trees are just uprooting.
They're dry.
The minute there's wind, they'll...
And just so the folks at home know, we can't start our next portion until 8 o'clock. That's why we're... That's why we're updating you on all the little things that are going on in Millis, so...
Town meeting?
Town meeting on the 19th, that's right. Yep.
All this is gonna be done. Nothing we're talking about.
Yep.
Dan, what's happening? How you doing? Going through with that project, huh? Look at this, we're using an easel and boards.
I was told I had to do it in the old...
The TVs don't work.
8 o'clock.
All right, let's see. Next item on the agenda is a special permit with site plan approval, public hearing for 35 Main Street, which would be the old Charles Restaurant, and that would be Dan Merrick's gonna present.
Soon to be the new Charles Restaurant.
Nicole has to read it.
Oh, yeah.
Town Millis Office of the Planning Board noticed a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Milestone of Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, at 8:00 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Nancy Cushman, on the application of Nancy Cushman, Skippies on the River, three Hampton Road, Norfolk, Mass., zero two zero five six. Requesting a special permit for, with site plan approval under Section thirteen C of zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for demolition of an existing commercial building and construction of a new commercial building, restaurant, in its place for property located, located at thirty-five Main Street, map twenty-seven, parcel ten, Millis, Mass. Copy the application and site plan is on file in the Office of the Town Clerk and can be viewed at the Town's website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, and making the presentation would be Dan, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dan Merrick with Legacy Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant. We filed an application for site plan approval to reconstruct the Charles Restaurant. The existing condition here is you have an existing building here, the handicap accessible ramp in the front, little landscape island, paving all around, gravel area here with an existing boat launch that is kind of informal thing that people use. The entire property's in the floodplain, as is this whole area. So we went to the zoning board first. We obtained a special permit from them for work in a non-conforming property, building. Got special permits for them for work in the floodplain and the watershed protection district. So that's all been done. The outline basically is going to reconstruct something very similar, similar footprint. We're gonna, the parking, the existing parking area around the building is a little informal in terms of configuration and layout, so we're gonna formalize it and have discreet driving aisles and parking spaces, walkways in front with some open areas for patios and landscaping, but otherwise, it's a similar, similar building with domally, one-story, with a little upper floor on the left side here, front entrance, access ramp, circulation in and around and out, basically like it does now. The site has seventeen parking spaces now. We're going to increase that number to nineteen with just a slightly more efficient layout. Since we are in a floodplain, we really can't do much in the way of regrading. We've provided documentation that we're not increasing the overall fill level. We're maintaining the level of flood storage on the property. The new building will be raised about eight, ten inches to make sure that the whole first-floor structure is out of the floodplain. Presently, it's partially in the floodplain. There'll be a new foundation. It will have flood openings required by the building code, required by FEMA for work in a floodplain. We're doing stormwater management to the maximum extent practicable. Obviously, the site's entirely in a floodplain, so when the site's flooded, it's not going to work, but the other ninety-nine percent of the time, it will. We're proposing some underground infiltration fields here for some roof runoff. And then in the back, basically a shallow, very shallow infiltration basin with some collection mechanisms, French drain along the side here. And I know that GCG provided some comments to you guys. I haven't had a chance to dig into those in great detail, but I was talking to Mike here, and he and I will chat next week and go through those, and we'll update the plans to address those comments. So that's about it. I can show you the, the renderings. Very similar in style to what's out there today, colonial roof lines.
Here's Mike.
Colonial roof lines. It's going to present to the street, very similar to what's out there today. So happy to answer any questions you have.
No, I looked at everything before, and everything looked like it made sense to me, so.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Dan, could you go back one page, please? Oh, I'm sorry, go back to the, your...
Line layout.
Yeah, the street layout. Do you have, is there an easement in place at the exit? Because I see that the, the property line...
Yeah, there's a right-of-way, there's a right-of-way easement right here.
There is, that, that's existing.
And that, yeah, that's existing. So that was one of the questions by GCGs. We'll provide the documentation on that, but yes, that, that's existing.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Just quickly, I know you mentioned you're in a floodplain, so you don't have a lot of leeway, but in the before times, when it used to rain periodically, several times a year, that parking lot would be completely underwater. What, what is the plan? Are they just going to close during those times?
It would close, yes. So last year, we had a good stretch, seven months of very, very heavy rainfall, and the parking lot was partially underwater. That is, I think, the first time in recent history that they've experienced that. So I think it's going to be a fairly infrequent occurrence. But yes, they, obviously, if the parking lot was flooded, they would not be open.
Yeah, that happened when the year Reagan was shot. That was, uh, that because it flooded down, and then that was, because that was the last time I remember seeing it, that flooded.
About ten years ago, it flooded and, and the whole bridge was flooded over.
Right, yeah, 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 so it, yeah, it isn't, it isn't at all.
And I was paying attention to the water levels at last year, and it was about a ten-year flood event. All that rain precipitated that.
Yeah, that was the Christmas one that we closed, one oh nine down.
Yeah, the one oh nine was closed, yep.
Yeah, and prior to that, it was about ten years.
And the only reason why we closed one oh nine down was because of, it was just icy. It could have stayed open, it wasn't...
Well, last year, the water did get over the road, right down.
Further down, yeah.
Yeah.
Right at the flood, the floor.
Just a little bit.
It flooded, it wasn't that deep on the road, but it was all icy.
Yeah, it was only a couple of inches.
And the, the people who were trying to, who were going around the DPW block were sliding into the river.
And, and so on that one, so that, that has to have, that has sewer, just out of curiosity?
Yes, there's an existing sewer pump station, pumps up into a force main that goes up to the top of the hill.
Okay.
Both buildings, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
You propose a freestanding sign on the plan, I don't see what...
Yeah, there is an existing sign, and they're going to reuse that. An existing standing sign.
That's within ten feet of the road?
It is.
It is. Did the ZBA pass variants for that, when they take it down and put it up?
We might have to go back to the zoning board for the sign.
I know, I wasn't there, it's hunting season, so.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, my only question is, how are you going to manage the, the boat launch, the, the boats? Is that owned by the property, or is it...
It's on the property, so the, the owner's intent is to, is to leave it open for public access as long as it doesn't interfere with the operation of the restaurant. If it becomes problematic, that might change, it's theirs.
It's theirs, okay.
Yeah, it's on private property, they own it. And we did make, basically, we left this open for that purpose.
All right, was there any comment from the audience? All right, so Dan, you just wanted us to go through the, take a look at this, and then you're going to get back to us on the comments?
Yeah. Mike, want to say anything? The loading area, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that, yeah.
All right, if there's nothing else, I make a motion to continue the public hearing to December tenth at seven thirty. All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, so...
Okay, I'll recuse myself on this.
Oh, it's another paper. Okay, so we got, we got five minutes to go. Do we have another meeting set up? Do we have...
December tenth and January fourteenth.
Do you want to do the February meeting?
No.
No?
That's really pushing us. Can we get my vacation together?
Uh, you want to, well, we can put it in. We got a few minutes to go.
Nineteen things open. My calendar's open, so.
Yep, hold on. Let's see here, if I can find my calendar. Come on. Sorry.
Just something to keep in mind. The March meeting would have to be the third, because I'll be on vacation that following week, so when you schedule February, you could maybe do it...
Earlier.
Earlier, is that okay with you guys?
That's fine with me. So do we want to do February fourth? When's our, the twelfth is our, twelfth, when's January? January is fourteenth. We could do one, two, three, four, four, that'd be four, that'd be...
You could do the fourth or the eleventh, it doesn't matter, but as long as you can do March third, that would be...
Yeah, do you guys, um, so you want to do either the fourth or the eleventh? Any preference for anybody?
Let's do the fourth.
Okay, all right.
February fourth, okay.
Sure.
And then you want to just schedule March, so it's March fourth?
Yes.
Yes, March fourth, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so then March fourth, March fourth, you said, can you...
Yes, Tuesday, March fourth.
We are so efficient.
And I apologize, your agenda should say twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-four.
Sorry.
We could really get nuts and schedule the April one, too.
Hmm?
We could go nuts and do the April one while we're...
No, we can hold up.
That's way, that's way too far. I can't remember what I did yesterday.
Yesterday, you don't have to remember.
March fourth, come on, all right, let's see here, plus... There we go. Okay. All right.
If you want, you can review your information that Peter's going to present. In the minutes.
All right. All right, for the folks at home, you can go out, get yourself a snack, we got three minutes to go. Hey, I thought we tightened up this meeting, so it was, it was quick.
Yeah. I'll go down to town, yes.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, but you do that, and then we'll have one that'll pick, like...
Oh, of course.
Look, it doesn't matter, as long as we're, you know...
I know I wasn't here last, last month, but... Is there any plan to review the existing zoning bylaws? Are we going to do another study? We did one, what, fifteen years ago?
Yeah, well, we, we talked about it, that Nicole had mentioned, that we should, because it's such a mishmash.
We did it, but, um, but MAPC came in, you know, with Charlie Aspermaw and myself. I think you were here. Yeah. And that's when we, we, you know, moved a lot of stuff around.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, there's a, there are, there's some conflicts between the bylaws and the zoning map, so that's...
Just a couple.
I've been trying to get the map, I've been trying, for years, I've been trying to get the map color coded for the zoning districts.
Ah, I had that same conversation this weekend with one of our select board members. Was it good? Was it a good conversation? It was a very good conversation. What was it? She asked me, what are we doing? Updating the bylaws and getting the color-coded, uh... Yeah, so, you know... Why don't you come up to the mic, Madam Chair? Well, I just talked to, uh, because we had a conversation about that. I just talked to Bob Weiss about that, right? And he's trying to look for some grant money for you.
Excellent.
That's, he's tasked with that today. He says you've been trying to do this for ten years.
Yes.
More than that.
More than that, but there has to be grant money for that, has to be, right?
I would think so.
Yeah, but if not, Mr. Chair, I think that, you know, maybe at the Maytown meeting, if we go that far, we should ask for the town to pay for it. I mean, it's just, it's something...
Yeah, yeah, the map needs to be, the map is really...
I support that.
It has to be done. Not that I'm building anymore, I don't give a, but, you know, some people do.
All right, so it's eight fifteen, so now our next item on our agenda would be the proposed zoning bylaw amendments, off-street parking and loading regulations, public hearing.
I gotta accuse myself, it's my article.
Oh, it is?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prior to the reading of the public hearing notice, I would like to make a motion to waive the reading of the entire bylaw.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing how you're doing.
Town Millis Office of the Planning Board noticed a public hearing. The Town Millis Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to general law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, on Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, Veterans Memorial Building, Room two twenty-nine, nine hundred Main Street, Millis, Mass., at eight fifteen P.M. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed changes to the Millis zoning bylaws. Proposed amendments include to see if the town, uh, article, to see if the town will vote to amend Town Millis zoning bylaw, Section eight, sorry, off-street parking and loading requirements, subsection C, parking and loading lot standards one, by deleting subsections B and C and two, F, J, and P, and replacing with the proposed article. Or any other action related thereto. The complete text of the proposed amendment is on file at the Office of the Town Clerk, Veterans Memorial Building, nine hundred Main Street, Millis, and available for inspection during regular business hours. These articles may not be numbered, as they will ultimately appear on the warrant at town meeting. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, Jim, since it's your article, do you want to run through it and explain why we have to...
I'm just going to turn it over to Peter Varga. Peter's, uh, works for Kleinfelder, he's an engineer in charge of all our stormwater aspects. He takes care of our permitting, and he's been doing that for at least three years now. He's filed our permits, and this is just an update. This was actually ready for the Maytown meeting, but it was pushed off because of, you know, other articles that were not as important, but, uh, but it was just pushed off until the November town meeting. They're just updates to the regulations that was actually put in place, I believe, back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, when the town first built a stormwater, uh, enterprise fund. The bylaw was put in place then, and most of these are just, just regular updates, and Peter will go through them. This, and I do want to thank the chair for putting this on tonight's meeting. It was a little rushed at the last minute. We did not, we found out that it was an article that had to be put in place from, from Town Council, and it has to go in front of, this will be a two-phase. Peter will be back in December for just an open vote, which he'll explain when we get into that part.
And the last part of this is that, the reason why we're doing all this is that the, the state, sorry, the feds require us to get a permit to use our stormwater system. So basically, to run the catch basins in the town, this is one of the hoops we have to jump, jump through. So just, just so the folks at home know why we're doing this.
Phosphorus load. That's going to be right on the stone, phosphorus load.
So, all right, great, thank you.
Thanks for the introduction, Jim. My name is Peter Varga, as Jim said, I'm with, with Kleinfelder, and I've been working with Jim and DPW for a few years now, implementing this, this federal permit that you're talking about. It's called MS four, which is Massachusetts Separate Storm Sewer System. Really, the, it's an iterative and multi-year permit, and there's, like, intertwining requirements with the permit, so. Millis being located in the headwaters of Charles River has a requirement to create a phosphorus control plan, and this is not unique. There's many towns within the Charles watershed and within any watershed that has a water body that has been identified as, like, you know, being polluted by phosphorus and that having an impact on that water body. Basically, these are minor changes to the bylaw which allow Millis to enforce or encourage more accurately the limitation of pervious, impervious surface. So, you know, cutting back concrete where it's possible, allowing stormwater to infiltrate into the ground where it's possible, encouraging green infrastructure. I did, I do have a handout, I don't know if...
Yeah, we got it, yeah.
Yeah, there's just some photos of, you know, some of the practices that, you know, are a result of implementing some of these regulations. Give you an idea of what we're talking about. But there's a, there's a prescribed kind of methodology in doing this analysis and identifying where the locations within the bylaws, you know, should be updated. And it's a prescribed methodology that we actually conducted two years ago. There was a requirement in two thousand twenty-two to do this analysis and to look for areas where the bylaws and regulations can be enhanced to encourage impervious, you know, the limitation of impervious surfaces. impervious, uh, you know, the limitation of impervious surfaces for the most part. So, we went through sort of the methodology that was prescribed by E P A and the state, um, to conduct that analysis. We took a look at not just the zoning bylaw, but all the other kind of rules and regulations within Millis that have intersecting, um, purposes, um, just to make sure there's no conflict with those regulations, that includes the land use subdivision rules and regulations, which was last amended in two thousand and two, and stormwater management regulations, article one, land disturbance and post-construction stormwater management. And we offered revisions to those as well, um, I understand that this evening is just focusing on the zoning bylaw. And really, the, um, very, very consistent themes across all documents, just, you know, trying to minimize impervious area, look for opportunities where it's safe to do so, to decrease road width, um, to encourage, uh, rain gardens, you know, um, and visual relief islands in areas of large parking lots, for example, um, and, uh, you know, allowing curb cuts so that the water can come off of the parking lot into these rain garden areas that you, which are designed to infiltrate stormwater. And, um, you know, it's really sort of the crux of it. There's not really too much else to, to add.
No, no, with this, this has already been, cause the, this, this came to us at the end, which just by oversight, um, but it's already been looked at by Town Council.
Yeah, so the methodology that we took in actually coming up with the red lines and the proposed red lines involved coordination with, um, all of the different, um, and that was very, you know, close coordination with, with Jim as well, it was sort of guiding us through which committees and organizations within the town need to take a look at this, and so, we've conducted several similar presentations, um, you know, to get to this point. And there has been unanimous, no feedback, um, you know, regarding, regarding the changes.
No, I mean, like you said, most of the stuff is, you know, stuff we've seen before, and, uh, if Brutus was here, he'd be, showed us slides of it, uh, you know, that he did over in Franklin, so, this is, this isn't anything new, surprising, so.
Yeah, um, this is really part of Millis's, you know, phosphorus control plan implementation, and Millis is ahead with implementing that, but this will allow the town to, you know, give the town formal authority to say, you know, have you thought about these aspects of, of new development, have you considered them, are they feasible and practical to implement, it's not like a heavy-handed forcing of these practices, but it's to encourage and, you know, give the town authority to, to implement them, and to ask these questions when development comes. There is, you know, there are costs associated with implementing the phosphorus control plan, and there are points that are actually given to Millis for implementing these types of solutions, um, that actually remove phosphorus from the stormwater before it enters the Charles River. There are co-benefits associated with green infrastructure, as all of you can imagine, during a drought, um, it's aquifer recharge, um, during times of, you know, overabundance of water, it is, you know, flood, oops, flood mitigation, you know, to allow areas for the water to go, um, so in terms of improving the overall environment in Millis, these are really concrete co-benefits that we're seeing, um, you know, widely as we implement these practices more and more.
All right, was there any questions from the board?
It looks good.
All right, um, so we need to make a motion to have this go to.
First, close the public hearing.
Yeah, first, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, were there any questions from the three people in the audience? Thank you. Um, all right, uh, any, any other questions from the board? All right, um, so I make a motion to close the public hearing? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we want to make a motion to, um, send this to.
To recommend approval at town meeting.
Right, to recommend approval at town meeting.
As written.
As written.
Second.
All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Sorry, I had to come all the way for that.
All right, um, and eight twenty-five, ooh, we are on schedule, all right, so, next item on the agenda, uh, agenda is special permit with waiver of site plan approval, public hearing, for thirteen fifty-two Main Street, um, select used cars.
Town and Millis Office of the Planning Board notes a public hearing, in accordance with the provisions of chapter forty-eight, section eleven, Mass. General Law. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at eight twenty-five P M, in the Veterans Memorial Building, room two twenty-nine, nine hundred Main Street, Millis, on the abstication of Brad Anthony, fifty Peter Christoph Way, apartment four eleven, Medfield, Mass. Requesting a special permit with a waiver of site plan approval, under section five, use regulations, table one, retail and service, number nine, establishment selling used automobiles and/or trucks, et cetera. The zoning bylaws of the Town and Millis for the sale of the used cars and trucks at thirteen fifty-two Main Street, Millis, Mass. Map twenty-two, parcel twenty-three, property owned by John Prunier. Copy of the application is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated, Richard Nichols, Chair.
Um, so the folks at home, this was the former Signature Properties property, um, so that they have closed up shop, and, uh, Mr. Anthony is looking to bring a, uh, to sell used cars there, so, if you wanted to go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, I know that you all have pictures that I provided before, but I made them extra big. So, I figure a picture's worth a thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, in case you wanna pass those around, if you have any questions.
Geez, I can see a little bit of my glasses.
What I did for those pictures is I brought over some cars from my lot, I'm currently two point two miles away in Medway, where I've been for the last nineteen years, and I was in Hollison twenty years before that. All my, my customers are here, love being in the area, as you may or may not know, Kevin Mean bought my block in Medway, downtown Medway, the whole thing, he's looking to do a very big project there, so, in the future, it will be gone, so, I really love being here, I actually just moved it to Medfield a couple of years ago, so, uh, here's my roots, and I would love to stay here. So, my goal is to do what I have been doing, we don't do any service work, I never have. I always do a nice quiet dealership, it's for display purposes, we have the cars for, uh, riding, we drive them and we don't use trucks. It's gonna be very quiet, like I've always done, um, so, I won't be affecting or bothering anybody, I know there's gonna be a apartment complex behind us. We're very respectful of that, uh, and my hours would be nine to five. And, uh, I just really appreciate the opportunity for you to hear me tonight, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think the, um, we sent it to the fire chief, the only question he had on that was to, go ahead, let, Camille, here.
The fire chief just had an issue with some of the parking of the vehicles, and he sent a modified sketch which I forwarded to Brad, and he is, you know, they're willing to cooperate and change the sketch.
Okay, all right, so anyhow, so, I just found out that, uh, the fire, that, uh, the fire chief had made a modification i- in the parking, which the applicant had, uh, had said was okay with him, and then Mike, I know you'd asked a question about handicap parking on there, so is there a, is there a designated?
Yes, there is a designated, uh, ramp, if you look at my di- at the diagram, there is a ramp in place, and there's two empty spots for parking, that we will dedicate for handicapped.
And then the other thing is signage, so, cause that, that always comes up.
Whatever you all think is good.
All right.
My, my goal was to just keep the sign that's there.
Yeah.
Strip it, put my name on it. I don't know, actually, to be honest with you, was, was there any kind of signage on the, on that roof?
No.
No.
No, okay, so I would just do that and then put my name on the door.
They'd have to, um, so, Mike, you'd have to apply for a building permit for the sign.
Yep, sign permit.
Yeah, so, and then with those that would go through, we, you know, we want them lit from, not internally lit, and it would, so it'd be similar to what they have there now. Um, any other comment from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
First, I've been to your current location, very friendly, great operation, no problems there, uh, this seems to be quite a bit smaller, is capacity? Are you downsizing, you're gonna have a separate off-site storage, traditional cars?
No.
Or is this a temporary location, what's your plan?
To be honest, no, no, I'm gonna just keep things, I generally only keep, you know, in the thirty car range anyways. If you know, notice how I have things now, the back is not mine, that's for the auto body, that's so. I only have the, really, the first two rows of cars, so, I usually keep around twenty-five cars, cause I hand-pick them. My, the way I do it is I have buyers on the road, I'm very unique, so, and we hand-pick the cars. Most of the cars aren't great, you know, when we get them, so we have the mechanics check them out, and if they're not good, I don't keep them. I don't wanna put a customer in a bad car, you could check out my reviews, I don't do it, I don't want people to be unhappy, and it's just bad business, so we're very particular to make sure the cars are nice, so, you can't, to do it right, you can't have a hundred cars, you have to keep it kinda in that niche.
Mike, you had something?
Yeah, I have, I have a question, a couple of, a couple of questions. Yeah, everybody else through? Yeah, um, first of all, you got a big development in the back, I think a fence or some sort of barrier would be, you know, an important type of barrier between the two uses, you know, if you had a fence in the back part, on the, separating that, uh, apartment house and the other uses, and how many vehicles you say you're gonna?
I was, uh, thirty-five.
Thirty-five vehicles?
But the fire chief wants to cut it down to thirty, which is fine.
Yeah. That site I'm familiar with, and, uh, it, it falls toward the building to the right-hand side, um, if you can see on this picture. And, and then right in the, um, in that bottom part, there's a drainage ditch there that has, uh.
On the left-hand side?
It's facing the building on the right-hand side.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, there's, there's riprap there, and there's a, uh, a drainage.
Yeah, that little drainage ditch.
And if you further look at the parking lot, the way it's constructed, everything pitches down into there.
For the rain runoff, I presume.
Right, and then also, there's a, there's a, uh, pipe that goes from that drainage ditch, doesn't, doesn't seem to appear to go across the road. It goes to your neighbor, which is faced you to the right.
Okay.
And where it goes from there, I don't know, uh, I would assume that eventually goes into the black swamp, and then from there, probably crosses somewhere over there. I haven't had time to really look into where it goes, but, um, having that many vehicles, uh, with, uh, oil leakage and maybe some gas leakage, uh, just having vehicles and, you know, for.
Car, we don't?
Any, any kind of, if you, let me finish.
I apologize.
Thank you, um, used vehicles, um, usually, uh, sometimes do, uh, omit either oil leak or whatever. Have you looked into, uh, uh, any mitigation, uh, for any of that stuff, there is, doesn't appear to be any there now, and there was only a few vehicles there for the real estate company, I don't know, uh, have you talked to anybody about, about that mitigating runoff into that area?
I've never had that problem, I, like, I've never had oil leaks in cars, cause they're all fixed before I got them.
I know, but there's always a potential.
I guess in a, any, anything's possible.
Right, so.
And I've never had get cars leak gasoline in my whole life, I've never seen cars leak gas.
Are you renting this property, or are you buying it?
I'm renting.
Okay, so that, either would go back to the.
I would recommend, uh, suggest that, um, the applicant, um, have somebody look at it, an engineer, or, or a professional look at it, to see what the impacts are, and give us some sort of report, you know, uh, based upon the amount of vehicles that are there, um, if an event does happen where they have an oil leak or whatnot. Where, wherever it all goes, which you can, if you go there, you can see it, I mean, I've, I've been there several times prior, um, and it goes into that little drainage area, and that, I don't know where that that other pipe goes, it looks like it's a ten-inch pipe.
So if they, if they, on that, if the, your land, if the person that you're renting it from would look at that, what they'd have to do is probably put it in the catch basin with like an elephant trunk or something like that? So there would be like a structure to capture.
To capture all the.
And if there's any oil that gets in, it separates it out, it's.
It's contained.
Yeah.
But it's all gravel in the back.
Well, the, what happens with this thing is, it's basically, it's like a chamber, so the water goes in, and then it has a, it has a device in it which only lets water out, and then the oil and the gas would float to the surface, and it protects the, it protects the runoff from getting.
They're not doing any repairs, it's just parking lot.
No, I know, but I, I mean, I think what, uh, what Mike's saying is that the increase in carload, eh, there's the potential for, and like you just saw, just, just with the other presentation that just happened there, um, you know, we have to be cognizant and careful of any runoff, so, you know, this would, I would say this would be, you should ask your, the person you're renting it from, and say that that would be something that we would be interested in having him look at, um, cause that, that would be, you know, changing the, the car loading is, is a bit of a change in use, uh, like Mike said from before, it was one or two vehicles there with a real estate, um, thing, and now we have a few more, so.
And also, what they could do is they can come up with, um, there's these pads, it's, it's like a yellow containment box that if, if anything ever happened, but you'd have to have that engineered, you know, to, for it to, to be allowed.
I think once they get somebody to review it, a professional, they can come up with several different.
Yeah, they can give some options, yeah.
Uh, may, maybe if they don't think it's an issue at all, maybe they could, you know, as long as we have a, a report on that, that, that concerns me.
Okay, no, that's fine, that makes sense, and we cut you off, huh? You're good?
Yeah.
All right.
Just thinking.
Yeah. No, we looked, and said, everything else looked great, other than that, they're really.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just about, uh, we, we didn't agree or disagree about a fence, the, uh, do we have some sort of inclination about putting a, a fence up in the back to separate the two uses?
Well, the, I, I would think that the apartment complex, since there is a hill behind me, that something would have to go on their end, because you would fall into my, in, into our, uh, premises.
Yeah.
So, how could I put a fence on top where they are?
So, the, the issue with that is that they already been permitted.
Yes.
So, um, they're.
They're gonna have something as, because if there were people that they could fall in anyways, the way it's constructed now.
There's no, I don't believe that there's a buffer there for a, a fence.
There is no buffer there, no.
But, um, I think maybe the consultant can, you know, whoever the owner hires to do a consultant could look at that aspect of putting some sort of a, a buffer between the two uses, right? The concern is the, the two uses, right? So, um, either a fence or maybe some, some other sort of, uh, suggestion, you know?
Okay, that sounds fine. You look like you're gonna say something.
I'm just thinking, I, I don't know that we wanna put the burden of the fence on this property, especially where he's, he's not the property owner.
Yeah, no, I mean, well, that would be the.
I have to agree with you.
Yeah.
I think the burden should go on the, the dwelling units, the apartments.
Okay, um, Mike, you're in.
Well, the.
Or not at all, I mean, if it's, it becomes an issue, then the parties can discuss fencing.
Well, that's, I think the, the gist of it is to look into it, not to say you have to do it, so, if they're gonna, you know, they're gonna have to hire some sort of consultant to look at the property for drainage.
As far as fencing goes, I think it's premature.
Why are you looking at this fencing, you could, you know, instead of coming back and paying another fee, you can say, can you just, you know, look at the possibility of a buffer, some sort of buffer?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I personally think the issue of a fencing should fall on the responsibility of the property owner for the, that is developing the residence. This property is at the lower level, it is an industrial property, it's zoned industrial, there's nothing new being constructed on it, I understand the issue of the leakage, but I think that issue really does fall on the responsibility of the developer who's building the apartments. That's where the risk is, the risk is not at this property.
I think, I think he's, what he's saying is this, it's a buffer, visual buffer, not. I think, I think he's, what he's saying is, is it's a buffer, visual buffer, not necessarily a safety buffer, is my understanding. And, and what I would say is that the question, is we could say, the question was asked, would they consider putting up a, some sort of, you know, it would be a courtesy fence type of thing, is what I would say. We could ask the question. If they say no, then we could take that as an answer. You know, we can always ask the question. They can always say no.
Could we suggest that the two owners get together and talk about it? Ask the, the owner of the, the building to talk to the developer? I think that's what Mike's asking, so see if the two of them could just speak.
I understand what you're saying, but it's all just dirt.
I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it, but I think...
They just have dirt, but on the upper level, it's not like there's strength to put a fence, you know?
I don't think he's saying fence. I mean, it could be bushes, or whatever they call those things.
I did say bushes or something, not, you know, a fence. Fencing would, could be not just structural.
Screening.
Yeah, screening.
Mr. Chair.
But I think it's a good idea that the owner of that building contact the owner of the developer, and sort of kind of have a discussion about it.
Between the owner of, the two owners?
Yeah.
I can ask.
Yeah, you can ask, you can ask the owner.
Just, go ahead.
I'm not the owner.
The, or the owner of the apartment buildings just took out all the trees. If they, if they felt to us a concern that they would be viewing the industrial area that they're building next to, I would think they would have left the trees or arranged to build the fence. I think we're overstepping in requiring a renter of a commercial property to require a fence.
We're not requiring a fence at all, we're asking a question.
But in all due respect, Mike, you're asking a tenant to try to, to now step in and bring two property owners of which he has no control, and Alan is correct, the visual buffer, while that might be beneficial, the issue that's now created, which, has been created by the apartment developer, and even taking this tenant, putting him aside, to now place that responsibility on this property owner, because it's now not an attractive visual sight, that lack of attractiveness of this was not created by this property owner, it was created by the, by the apartment developer. So I think placing that, yes, you can say, we can ask him, but I, I don't think it's appropriate for the town to be asking this property owner to fix or address an issue that his butter has created in an industrial zone, and asking a, a potential tenant to play middleman. I mean, quite honestly, if I was a developer and I had a potential tenant from my butter, I'd be like, go away, leave me alone. I mean, I just, I think you're placing a lot of responsibility on this tenant and on the property owner, where it's, he's not the one that's created the issue. But, so, I mean, we can agree to disagree.
I, I think what Mike's saying, the tenant's in front of us, the property owner's not here, and I guess the property owner and the other hostels not here either. It's the tenant that, that's in front of us, and it was, it was a public hearing, so it was duly published, so the, the property owner in the back didn't show up, so I guess that's, I gotta think about that, you're right. We're making an issue out of something that hasn't been raised as an issue by any of the interested parties. It shouldn't be a condition of approval.
No, it wasn't going to be a question anyhow. Yeah, it wasn't going to be a question anyhow, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not...
We haven't given any, any approvals at all yet, we're just asking a simple question.
No, what you are asking is for, is for a report to be, to be produced by the property owner, and now we're, and, and this whole buffer thing, I don't...
Well, on the...
Well, the most important part of that is the mitigation of the runoff into that, that basin, so...
The one that is, I do agree with that. I mean, on, on that, the, that's the one thing I do agree on, is I think that that should be looked at. That's, that's, you know, that has been, you know, the, the vehicle load has gone from three vehicles to thirty, and to be, you know, responsible in our part, I think at least the minimum of that, having that looked at, is something that we should do. I think I agree on that. On the fence, you know, on the fence, I...
You can simply say no.
Yeah.
Well, we asked the question, no, we're not going to put up a buffer, okay?
Would they consider, would they consider a privacy, we could ask that and just say, would they consider? If they say no, then, they say no, we'd make it a part of the condition. You know, and it may be, it may be advantageous to them too, I mean, go ahead.
Would the burden be on?
The property owner.
Yes, but the apartment complex property owner, or my property owner?
Well, that's, well, the, right now...
Which is why, why are we impaling him in this?
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I...
No one's complained about it.
No, that's, I...
Mr. Chair, I think, I think one of the problems is that this housing development is a forty-B. We had no control over it whatsoever. So we don't even know what the hell is going up there. Okay, you're going to have an issue, there're going to be a lot of kids up there. If there isn't some sort of a buffer, you're going to be, you have no idea who's going to be coming down the hill, looking at your cars, playing, whatever.
I'm aware of, of that.
Okay, so you, you're, the owner of your building should, you know, and, and he's responsible too, because he owns the property.
But I could be any business, I could be a beauty, it could be a beauty salon.
Right.
If it's a beauty salon, people still would be, you'd have customers.
Cars at one time, that's the thing.
People would be leaving automobiles, or, you know, you know, people can enter that from the street or from above, so it's not going to be stopped from, people can come there where we're...
I know, but as, as Mike said, you have a situation where if you have a car, then who knows what's going to happen?
Well, that's why I have insurance.
Yeah, but if this, if gas leaks down, your insurance isn't going to cover a lot of that stuff, particularly if some kid...
If I was...
Doesn't have anything to do with the, with the screening.
But we're talking about a drain mitigation.
Well, that, that I understand.
We agree on that already.
And we'll get somebody to, to check that out, but they're going to have a parking lot above right there too. They're in the same situation. People will be parking cars above, and I'll have some cars below.
Yeah, but they're, they're also building it with, with the proper mitigation that Mike's talking about in, in this new development.
Yes, oh, I...
So I think that...
But the hill that's there, excuse me, but the hill that's there is still there, so if they're doing the apartment complex, and I don't keep automobiles there, but, you know, it was, let's say it was a beauty salon, the landscape's still the landscape. You know, I'm talking about the fencing here.
I thought you were talking about the drainage.
No, 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 I'm sorry, not about, no, not about...
The drainage is, I mean, you're in front of us now, and, and, and it's a change of venue of what was there prior, and that's why we're talking about the drainage system.
Change of use, yeah.
Yeah, no, the drainage...
If you agree and apply, I appreciate it.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent, yeah, that's, that's...
All right, go ahead.
I think we're all in agreement on the drainage issue. I suggest we continue the discussion until the next meeting, give the, give this gentleman a chance to have it looked at. The, the fence issues are relevant to the discussion at this point.
Okay. That's fine. Time-wise, on that, is just so, not that we're going to change the decision, but time-wise, what was your thought process on this? Is this, is this something where you had hoped that this would be passed, and you're moving the cars down next week, or...
Well, I was, I was hoping it would be passed to do it within the next month or so, yes.
Yes, so if we, because we would ask to have, we'd ask to have some sort of control over that, down to that water. The fencing, the fencing, I think we've, we've kind of split on that fifty-fifty on that, but we would continue it to our next meeting. So if you could get back to us on the, in my mind, we'll have to vote on it, but on my mind, if we had you get back to us on the, on the drainage, then we could, you know, whatever they decide that they wanted to do, that we could make our decision at the next meeting.
So I would need an engineer to do a site, to figure that out, is that right?
Yeah.
But I've never done anything.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, so...
The owner, the owner, you should appro, you should... You should approach the owner, you know, with the results of the meeting of tonight, and say that we request that we have a, he has a professional review for mitigation into the, the, the detention basin that's there.
And there is, there's ways to mitigate that?
The engineer will give you a report.
Okay.
Yeah, and if they do that, then we would be, that would, you know, at least that we could figure out, you know, they, if they could come up, they'll come up with an answer, and you could pick one of the answers, and if it's acceptable, then that would take care of that, and then we could sharpen our swords, and we could duel it out at the next meeting on the fencing.
I move that we continue the discussion to December tenth.
Second. All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And we didn't close the public hearing. So I make a motion to close the public hearing. What?
We're continuing.
Continuing the public hearing, continuing the public hearing till the tenth.
And do you want to do, we have thirty-five Main Street at seven-thirty, do you want to do this at seven?
Thirty-five, yep. All right, well, good, well, thank you for all the information, that was great ahead of time, and...
Thank you very much.
And we should...
Put these back, I'd like to mail them to you.
If you would like them, you may have them.
I'll keep them for the file, because I didn't want to print out all the others, so...
Yeah, that's great.
Great.
Will I need them in, in the future?
Will you what?
Will I need them in the future?
She'll bring them, okay.
I'll, I'll keep them for the file until the next meeting.
Cool.
And Brad, do you have that revised plan, or is it the one the chief sent? Is it...
This is the chief's.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, I'm cool.
All right, good.